Becky, are we live?
Good.
Okay, let's go. Good evening and welcome to Brevard City Council, regular meeting of March 17th. As we start the meeting tonight, I would like to introduce everybody who is up here. On my far right is our city attorney, Mac McKellar. Next to him is councilman Lauren Wise. Next to Lauren is councilwoman Pamela Holder. Next to Pamela is councilman Mac Morrow. I'm Mayor Maureen Kopeloff. To my immediate left is our city clerk Denise Hudson. Next to Denise is Mayor Pro Tem and councilman Gary Daniel. Next to Gary is councilman Erin Baker. And next to Erin is our city manager, Wilson Hooper. And at this point, I would like to ask Pastor Vernita Alford from Brevard First United Methodist Church to please come and give us our invocation tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a pleasure to be with you again. I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve in this community and to be invited to city council. It's a wonderful opportunity. I wanted to say just a couple of things. We get to partner with Bread of Life, which had their Empty Bowls fundraiser, which was held at our church this past weekend on Saturday. And for the first time in 19 years, we had to take extra tables out into our welcome center, and we had over 400 people come to that fundraiser.
Oh, wow.
It was a record for Bread of Life, and we're really grateful to sponsor that. And it was wonderful to see how our community turned out for that event this past Saturday. We also get to partner with the Duke Endowment for Rural Churches, and we are sponsoring for the sixth year in a row, a summer literacy initiative, which is June 18 to July 18. And our site director, who is Bailey Hale-Bissio, she was our county teacher of the year last year from Pisgah Forest Elementary School. She directs our site, and we host this summer 30 students from every elementary school in Transylvania County who are in first and second grade in order to help them get on grade level. And that is in a four-week period. We are able to do amazing things thanks to our staff and the focus on literacy. We'll host 30 students this July or June and July. And last year, our program indicated a growth of four months, six weeks, over the time span of the summer literacy program, which is actually unheard of in terms of the research related to literacy. So we focus on helping kids learn how to read and stay on grade level, and that has a lot of ramifications for them later in their life. The third thing I want to talk about is trauma. We've just experienced a difficult weekend in Brevard and Transylvania County. Can I get an amen to that?
Amen.
We've had a student who, we're not quite sure, but she may, they may have committed suicide. And we also are part of an effort to help the Levis-Skaya family regain some healing or gain some healing after the loss of their two children, Joe Siah and Joshua, who were lost in an accident, a tree fell on their home. So we are all dealing with some kind of trauma in one way or another, and we are partnering with the Center for Trauma-Resilient Communities to become a healing-centered church. So those are three organizations here in western North Carolina we get to partner with, knowing that when we work together, we can do more. Can I get an amen to that?
Amen.
With those things in mind, if you would join me in a word of prayer. Holy God, we give you thanks for this day and the chance that we have to make a difference in this beautiful part of your wonderful world. God, we mourn with those who are mourning this day. We mourn with families who are deeply affected with the loss of their children. We mourn with families who are continuing to experience the loss of their homes and their regular way of life due to Hurricane Helene. God, we long to bounce back, but it is difficult to bounce back in light of consecutive crises and difficulties, one right after another. We ask your tender mercy, and we pray your direction as we strive to serve those who are least lost and last. God, help us remember to focus where we can make a difference. Help us remember to follow the helpers and to help the helpers. God, also, help us to motivate all of our resources for the good of this community so that we might be an example in western North Carolina of what a small community can be when a small community comes together to make a difference for all. God, we pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. That was so appropriate. We so appreciate our faith community. If everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, honor, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Madam Mayor, you have a quorum. All members are present.
Okay. Council members, you've got the draft agenda in front of you. Are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, if we can add an additional closed session to discuss potential litigation.
Any other proposed changes, council? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Council, you've got the draft minutes of the February 17th, 2025 regular meeting sent to you. Are there any corrections or changes to the draft minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, we will have public comments. The public is invited to speak during public comment at this time on any topic unless it is a public hearing item on the agenda. Anyone who wants to speak must register with the city clerk. When it's your turn, step to the podium in front of city council, state your name and address clearly, limit comments to three minutes or less, and avoid repetition. Direct comments to the full council, not to an individual council member or to staff, and groups are encouraged to appoint a spokesperson on their behalf. Okay, and I will call people up in the order that they have signed up. The first person is Mr. Rodney Lox.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Rodney Lox. I live at 187 South Rice Street. I attended your workshop on March the 7th. My first impression was that it was well organized. You were very cordial to each other, and you agreed with each other in most cases. I liked the triangle you had for priorities, recruitment, housing costs, and tourism. You discussed essential services and core services, but when I think of tourism, I think of it as the icing on the cake. And I was expecting you to prioritize the cake, and the cake are the people who live here. You know, the data says people who work in Brevard cannot afford to live in Brevard. We need high-paying jobs and means to get to high-paying jobs. New homes are affordable to build, but not affordable to rent or buy. This year, I hope you will make the citizens of Brevard a high priority. You have tough decisions. Are you going to make the tax, the next tax rate an increase or revenue neutral? Are you going to work closer with the county commissioners? Because both of you are in the same boat. If you sink, they sink. Are you going to fill these vacant buildings around town? You have tough decisions to make. I just hope you make the right ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lox. Our next speaker is Dr. Paula Hartmanstein.
Hello. Good evening, council and mayor. I'm Paula Hartmanstein. I live at 249 Pine Mountain Trail in Brevard. I'm here to give an update on age-friendly Brevard initiatives. First, on March 6th last week, we sponsored, along with AARP, a summit on safely aging in place, and we had a record number of attendees. We surpassed our number from all the programs last year. We had 92 people present. The feedback was excellent that I heard, and we had three great speakers, including Jeff Adams from the county Department of Transportation. My second point is, I have a quiz question for you. What does Brevard have in common with Sausalito, California and Philadelphia, Pennsylvania? On its surface, not much, right? But apparently, the National AARP Livability Committee thinks there are commonalities. On Thursday of this week, I'm sitting in for our mayor at a national forum. I nominated her to be part of it, and because she's on vacation, she nominated me, and we got selected. The topic is the domino effect. That is, how age-friendly programs have connected with and impacted organizations throughout the Brevard area. And I've been working very hard on my PowerPoint, just got it done today. So anyway, I just wanted to give some recognition to that national program. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hartmanstein. Our next speaker is Harvey Sankey.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Harvey Sankey. My new address is 51 Lake House Trail. I'm here concerning a statement that was made and signed by all the city council members and the mayor concerning immigration-related law enforcement. I would like to challenge each person, each city council member and mayor tonight in the remarks section to state specifically that the city of Brevard is not a sanctuary city. I would like that to happen tonight in your remarks section. This statement here was a little wishy-washy. I know how it was arrived at. I could tell you how it was arrived at, but I will not go over again. You know how it was arrived at. There is one important person on this dais who raised reservations about this, and that person also raised reservations about this in the end also, this statement. I think this statement was virtue signaling, and it also caused anxiety and concern that some of our neighbors are feeling about this statement. They are saying, oh, my God, are we a sanctuary city? They have, they have a lot of fear about that fact that this may indicate that it's a sanctuary city. Also, this may affect federal funding if we're considered a sanctuary city. So I'd like each one of you to make a specific comment about whether or not we're a sanctuary city tonight. If you don't make that comment, I would assume you agree that we are a sanctuary city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sankey. Our next speaker is Doug Powell.
Good evening, Mayor, city council and staff. My name is Doug Powell. I live on Oakdale Road. I am here to speak against the Azalea so-called Affordable Housing Project that is being proposed. We can all agree that our local workforce needs lower-cost housing and better-paying jobs. This is not a debatable issue. I am not here to question your motives with this project because only you know what those are. The challenge before us is, will building this low-income housing project just outside of Brevard city limits help or hurt our community and its quality of life? History of these tax credit programs and its Section 8 requirements point to resounding no. Everyone's idea of success for projects such as this is different to each individual. For many of this, many on the council, it might be just getting a building built and doing something. But the nature of the funding and the federal tax credits needed to fund this project will not allow the stipulations necessary to keep this community safe. If this project is truly to bring affordable workhouse, workforce housing to Brevard, then why isn't there a requirement to be employed in order to live there? That's simple, because it goes against fair housing laws. And if this project is being sold as a net positive to our community and our quality of life, why aren't there any requirements for clean and sober living? Again, because this would be illegal for a government-funded concept. So the question really is, if the project is funded and built, will it make us all feel good, or will it actually do good? Let's look at four projects in Asheville that promise similar affordable housing solutions: Maplecrest, Pisgah View, Deerview, and Hillcrest. On any given day, these affordable housing solutions are notorious for draining valuable emergency resources of police, fire, and EMT to respond to drug and violence issues. This is, this turns, this in turn slows emergency response times for the rest of the citizens of Asheville. Before voting on this plan, please take a city council field trip to these apartment buildings and see what you are planning to bring to Brevard. I will leave you with the one Yelp review I found from Maplecrest from a Mr. Juan J. Beware of this apartment complex. It is highly dangerous and an unsafe place to live. I lived there for two years and ended up moving to Tijuana, Mexico, where it's a much safer place to live. I heard literally hundreds of gunshots there and multiple people shot and killed and wounded when I was living there.
30 seconds, Mr. Powell.
It was terrifying. So if you think that your life matters because it really doesn't matter to them, then I would definitely think twice about living in these HUD low-income apartments if you value your sanity and the quality of your life. They gave me PTSD living there, and that's just not right. I hope the council thinks twice before moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. And that is everyone with public comment. All right, we're going to move on to certificates, awards, and recognition. I gotta get some good pictures here, Emery. All right, I am gonna get to do something that very few mayors ever get to do. City. Give me a guess.
100.
No, Harvey, you're wrong. Okay, all right. Emery, come on up here. I'll tell you. That is, we are recognizing an individual who has worked for the city of Brevard for 45 years. I don't think many mayors have the privilege of standing next to somebody who has dedicated their entire working life to that city, to that community, and has spent their time making Brevard a better place for every single one of us. And I'm gonna read this proclamation, but you know, there are just not enough words to really express what I think about Emery. He has done such an incredible job, and I'm gonna read this because we always have a formal proclamation, but I want you to know that these words are coming from the heart. And although I am so proud of those 45 years and I so appreciate everything that you have done, we are going to miss you, shipmate. I tell you, it's not gonna be the same place without you here. But, all right, let's do this floral proclamation. All right. And you've got your family here. Let's introduce your family first, too. Introduce who's here.
This is my daughter Alexandra, and this is my grandson Theo, and my wife Krista, and my other grandson Sawyer.
Okay. You could join your husband.
I'm just saying.
He's like family. And it's wonderful that the family could join us today because, really, this is, your family has basically served this city for 45 years, too, you know? So, all right. Proclamation, number 2025-04. A proclamation honoring Emery Bain Owen on his retirement, declaring March 31st, 2025 through April 5th, 2025 as Emery Owen Week, and bestowing Emery Owen a key to the city.
Oh, wow.
And works here, okay. Whereas, Emery Bain Owen is a Transylvania County data who began working for the city of Brevard part-time in 1979 and full-time in 1980 for the public's Works Department. And I'm gonna digress. Think about 1979. What were you guys doing in 1979? Some of you are bored, but 1979, I can barely remember back to that. But yes, that is 79. All right.
I guess I was bit by that.
There are a lot of things different in 79 than now.
I wanna jump.
Whereas, in 1983, Emery transitioned to the wastewater treatment plant where he has served to this day. So you have served at the wastewater treatment plant. Let's see if we can do the math here. Forty-three years. Did you get that right?
Forty-two.
Yes, yeah. Forty, forty, forty-two. Forty, I don't know. You lost.
Whereas, over the years, Emery achieved higher degrees of certification in field, reaching the highest industry grade of four in 1999. And whereas, his unique mixture of knowledge and experience earned him a promotion to plant superintendent in 2016. I'm gonna digress again. You know, I'm often calling Emery and saying, Emery, you know, I've got to explain our wastewater treatment plant to some group. I say, Emery, could you refresh my memory on exactly how the plant works? And giving him credit, he has the most unique way of explaining it to where even I could understand it. I will never forget about the little bacterias just running around hungry and eating all of the stuff in the water, and then getting so full they sink to the bottom. I got it, don't I? Yeah. But hey, you know, he really, you know, he was, he's incredible. He is the only person I've ever seen that could basically hold a group of people enthralled for 30 minutes while he describes wastewater treatment. I'll never forget that day. It was amazing.
That was fun.
That was cool. Oh, yeah, it went and thought in my list. Okay, back to the proclamation. Whereas, throughout his career, Emery has brought best practices from his industry to Brevard, including the region's first industrial pretreatment program and notable efficiency included to his physical plant. And whereas, Emery's work helps preserve Brevard's values: conservation, recreation, community health. And whereas, Emery's public service spirit is also present in his personal life, where he has been heavily involved with Mud Creek Baptist Church and charitable groups such as the Carpenters Hand Ministry and United Web. And whereas, Emery's long and fruitful 45-year career is a model of public service, and the city of Brevard owes him a debt of gratitude. Now, therefore, being proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Brevard that, one, this body expresses to you, Emery Owen, on behalf of our citizens and officials, our thanks, appreciation, and deep gratitude for your 45 years of service to the city of Brevard and its residents. Two, March 31st, 2025 through April 5th, 2025 shall be recognized as Emery Owen Week in the city of Brevard and its observance commended to all Brevard residents. So guys, we're in this week. So stop him and thank him and shake his hand. You get an entire week. I've never seen anyone a week before. I've only given a day. Yeah. I know. And three, a key to the city is hereby bestowed to you, Emery Owen, in recognition of the character of your long service, faithful, effective, invaluable, and the contributions you have rendered to the city of Brevard and its residents. And it's signed by myself and every member of city council. Yes, and, if you can put this down, why don't you get Krista, we'll just put that down somewhere. You actually get a key to the city. Anybody that works for the city for 45 years deserves it. And you know, it doesn't open anything other than the hearts of all of us. This is the key to our heart, because you have definitely, definitely earned it. So here's your key, and I get to hug you. We also have a plaque, something else put on the wall, in recognition of 45 years of service presented to Emery Owen, in recognition and appreciation for your exceptional service, dedication, and commitment to the city of Brevard. So you've got so much stuff between you. And do you want to have the rest of your family come up? Come on up here. Let's get a picture with your grandfather. Yeah, okay. All right. Yeah.
She's got the key.
She would be trying to start Papo's car.
All right, Emery, I just want to give you the traditional best wishes that throughout my Navy career, we always gave to people. And, you know, retirement is both a sad and a happy occasion, and we wish you the very best. We know that we will miss you. You had better come visit. And, but on behalf of the citizens and the city of Brevard... Brevard, on behalf of the elected officials and the staff, I wish you fair winds and following seas, shipmate. And here you have a location.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes, yeah. Definitely real gold.
Sure, last chance for purple rain, man.
We got public comment every, every couple weeks.
All right. Well, now we're going to move on to special presentations. And our first special presentation is the City of Brevard Annual Independent Audit for the year ending 30 June of 2024. And, Mr. Manager, are you?
Yes, ma'am. I am going to introduce Dean and our independent auditor Travis Keever from Gould Killian here momentarily. But two introductory comments before I do. The first is, there was an error in the staff report that I want to correct, and that is, we did have one FPIC, Financial Performance Indicator of Concern, which Travis will tell about, tell us about here shortly. And so I wanted to issue that correction. And the reason why I say that here publicly is because it's going to matter next week, or excuse me, at our next meeting when we talk about Azalea Avenue. And then the second thing I wanted to say, just for the benefit of the viewing audience, is that if you follow the city council, you may have noticed that this presentation is coming a little late this year. And that's because the Local Government Commission, which is the state agency that reviews municipal audits, recognized that Western North Carolina was experiencing a lot of pressures this year that made it hard for municipalities like us to submit these on time. And so we submitted it a month or so late at the, with the permission of the LGC. And so that's why this presentation is taking place about a month later on the calendar, excuse me, than it normally does. And so with that, I'll ask Travis to come up and walk us through the audit.
Oops, no, what did I do?
Denise, where was the?
It should be minimized down in the.
Where's the PowerPoint minimizes for?
Try the PDF.
I think, I think it's the best.
Yes, that's yours.
Oh.
And then your clicker is.
Okay. Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
Thank you for allowing us to serve as your auditors once again for fiscal year 2024. Our firm has, has been your auditor for a number of years now, and we always appreciate the opportunity to serve the city. I'll start by thanking Dean and the staff of the Finance Department for their hard work and cooperation in completing the audit. As usual, all the city staff was incredibly responsive and accommodating, and have shown a tremendous level of professionalism, just like they always do, and working their way through our audit. So we appreciate that very much. On January 23rd, we finalized the audit report for the city of Brevard for the year ending June 30, 2024. Now, keep in mind, the objective of an audit is to provide reasonable, not absolute assurance, that the financial statements of the city are fairly stated, and that the city's in compliance with major federal and state grant program requirements. An audit includes examining evidence on a test basis to support the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements using our professional judgment and evaluating management's accounting policies and estimates. The financial statements are the responsibility of management. You guys engage us to audit those numbers, and we've issued an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion on the financial statements. We also audit the compliance of the city in regard to significant requirements of federal and state grant funding received. That compliance is also the responsibility of management, and we issued an unmodified opinion on compliance. Now, government auditing standards require us to document the key internal controls that the city has in place and verify that those controls are implemented. We do this by testing a sample of expenditures to make sure purchase order policies are followed. We make sure expenditures are approved by authorized individuals. The budgetary authority exists for particular transactions, and the invoices are coded to the correct budget code. We also test a sample of payroll transactions to make sure that employees that get paid are actual employees of the city, and that they're being paid at an approved rate for the approved hours that they worked. We also conduct walkthroughs with key personnel in the Finance Department and others to ensure that adequate processes and a system of checks and balances appear to be in place as it relates to the controls over the city's financial information. So all of that to say, we, throughout all of those procedures, we noted no material weaknesses in internal control and no instances of reportable noncompliance. So, all that in that summary is a mouthful, but to recap, it's a clean audit opinion, a clean compliance opinion, and no findings. So at a high level, that's about as good a report as I can give on a set of financial statements. And we'll flip through and give just a kind of few statistics. In your annual comprehensive financial report for FY '24, you reported 11 governmental funds, including the General Fund. This included total assets of 11.7 million, total revenues of 12.7 million, and total expenditures of about 12.3 million. You also had two enterprise funds included in your financial statement, of course, the Utility Fund and the Sanitation Fund. Your total assets there are 43.9 million, of course, due to the heavily capital nature of the Water and Sewer Fund. Total revenues of 11.7 million and total expenses of about 7.6 million. Now, this is what the city manager was referencing just a moment ago. A couple of years ago, the LGC started a benchmarking or key performance indicator program that they call Financial Performance Indicators of Concern. They ask us to submit your financial data measured against certain benchmarks or thresholds that they've put in place. And if anything related to the city's financial performance trips one of those thresholds, we have to talk about it in a public meeting. You only had one this year. The unrestricted cash in the Utility Fund only represented about one month worth of expenditures in that fund. The LGC would like to see a minimum of two months. That's a, they consider that a performance indicator because if cash balances get a little bit low, that can be a red flag in the future as far as the cash flow in that fund. And the reason for this was, seems like sort of a one-time occurrence. There was a timing difference between when some bills were paid versus when the reimbursements are allowed to be submitted. I think it's, the expectation is that would be corrected in the coming year and would not be an FPIC next year. And again, that was the only one of those we had for FY '24. Just a few general fund statistics. This shows the pie charts showing revenues by source. Just like most municipalities in North Carolina, ad valorem taxes made up the biggest share. That was about 57% of your revenue. Local option sales tax was second at 21%. Again, that's pretty common. And if you see year over year, everything was pretty flat. We had a little bit of an increase in ad valorem taxes. Of course, we had about a 7% increase in the property tax rate from 23 to 24, so that's the reason for that. Everything else, including local option sales tax, was basically flat. Same pie chart, just for expenditures. And again, just like you would expect to see, public safety is the, kind of the biggest piece of the pie. General government and public works are about equal after that. And again, very little year-over-year change in those expenditures by pie. So this chart shows your fund balance, total fund balance, as well as your available fund balance over a four-year period. You can see the, the fund balance and available fund balance, both are slightly trending upwards over time. So that's always good to see. And this compares available fund balance as a percentage of your general fund expenditures. That's a measure of fiscal health that the LGC likes to use in particular. So your, your own city policy says that we like to maintain expenditures at a level of about 25% of available fund balance. You guys are, have hovered between 30 and 40%. The last few years are about 36% right now. And of course, the municipal average in North Carolina is about 60%. Just a couple of property tax statistics. There's not a whole lot on here that's noteworthy. Of course, you see the rate increase from 23 to 24. Valuation stayed relatively consistent. I know you've got a valuation coming up, so I'm sure that'll change probably next year. Your current year collections, of course, jumped from 5.8 million to 6.3 from 23 to 24, and your collection rate has stayed at 99% or above all three of those years. So that's, that's a really healthy collection rate. And then some statistics on the Utility Fund. Unrestricted net positions, about 1.5 million. That would be, if you were a business, that would be what you'd call retained earnings or equity. Your change in net position from 23 to 24 was about 4.2 million. That's largely due to capital grant funding received. You generated 1.6 million in cash flow from operating activities. That means that the operations of that fund is generating revenues of 1.6 million over cash outlays. So that, that leaves money over to service the debt or make capital improvements. Cash outlays on constructions and construction and other capital purchases was about $3 million. We took in about 1.8 million in debt issuance proceeds, and we paid about 1.7 million out in debt service, as principal and interest combined. And all of those are, are relatively consistent year over year, especially the, the debt service numbers. That seems like 1.5 to 1.7 is, is kind of where you guys are going to land every year for the next few years. That is about all I've got. I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. We'll open it for any questions from council. Mr. Wise, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Ms. Holder?
Neither do I. Thank you for your help.
Mr. Morrow?
Always good to get a good report. Thank you.
Mr. Daniel?
I have no questions either.
Mr. Baker?
I just want to thank Dean and thank you for all the hard work. I do have one specific question about the, the FPIC. I know in the past, we, we have to write a letter explaining that. I just wondered where we were in that process and if we had heard back or when that.
I'll be writing it this week. If it really just involves our one.
Right.
Project we had, which has some delay to be eased, let's say.
Right.
I'll have that written this week.
All right. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. Moving on to our next special presentation. It is the Architectural Standards from Plisserbia. And I believe, Emily, are you introducing this?
I will just do a very quick introduction and leave the rest to them. So today, we have our full architectural standards for your review, for public hearing. And this is the culmination of about a year and a half's worth of work, including a full review of the architectural styles and vernacular within the city of Brevard. Lots of research and community engagement. This, this Plisserbia team and staff engaged an estimated 400 individuals as part of the public input process, which consisted of design workshops, open houses, walking tours, project website, online survey, et cetera, et cetera. So this is the culmination of a lot of public input and a lot of effort and research. We're very excited to be bringing it before you today. This is not the first time you've seen a deliverable from them. The first phase was the creation of the building design guidelines, which is a standalone document referred to as the City of Brevard Architectural Visual Guidelines, which was really the culmination of all of the public input. And then we used that to be able to codify the architectural standards. So with that, I think I'll leave it there and hand it over to Juan and Dylan with the Plisserbia team to talk about the architectural standards and our codification.
We actually have a hard copy of the visual guidelines for all the electeds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I just wanted to take a minute while he hands out the, these guidelines. Thank you all. We were honored to be selected to do the project. To be honest, we learned a lot. Every project we do, we, we learn a lot. We don't know all the answers when we come into a project, and that's part of the nature of our work. And we hope that you guys learned some, some as well. What we've just handed the council is available online as well, so you guys can take a look at it. But it's been a pleasure working with you all, working with the community, and especially the staff who has been really incredible. So thank you really for all the hard work and, and turning, you know, helping us turn this into, into actual code, which is really the tough part. So they did the tough part of the work. We did the fun part, which was drawing the stuff. Dylan, you want to go into, into the detail?
All right. Thank you all. We're just going to give you a brief overview of what exactly we're looking at here in terms of adoption for the updated Chapter 5. So here I just wanted to start with kind of the flow chart that we've constructed, kind of goes over what section tackles what and makes it easy for people who are applying and also people who are on the review side as well. So the beginning part is just kind of detailing the intent, applicability, and process. And then we get into this question of geography. So properties within a specific character area geography are treated a little bit differently than properties outside of those. These character areas, there are two of them, we'll talk about them a little bit later, have been given special treatment and a little more heavy hand in terms of design guidance based on publicer, public feedback that we heard. Outside of those sections, 5.6 through 5.8 talks a lot about design elements. So that's kind of more about the architectural style and building types that we're looking at. And then we kind of close out with the different elements like building frontages, extensions, and materiality. So with that overview, just wanted to touch on the intent, applicability, and process in the first section. Of course, there are a couple comprehensive plan goals that are fulfilled by these architectural standards, but also we use the central thesis as kind of a guiding, you know, vision as we move forward here. So to preserve and enhance Brevard's unique architectural character. When we're looking at applying these standards, we're focused the most on applying them to new construction. There's been some discussion about thresholds of applying it to renovations and upfits. What we've been looking at is only applying it to certain features that are being updated. So if someone wanted to repaint a structure in a character area, a applicable color, it wouldn't, they wouldn't be stopped by doing that by having to invest in changing everything else about their building to bring it in a compliance. And then I wanted to remind everybody here also that under North Carolina state law, these architectural standards do not and cannot apply to 1 to 4 unit residential structures. So we've crafted that, these with that in mind. And then we've also included manufacturing and wholesale units as well. All right. So just talking about the character areas briefly, we highlighted two based on public feedback of these two areas, the downtown and the Piscata Gateway area, right at the entrance to the National Forest, as kind of those that leave perhaps the largest lasting impression on people visiting Brevard, passing through, working and living here. Those two areas, as I mentioned before, will be treated a little bit more specifically and a little more heavy-handedly based on these architectural standards. So each of those character areas are linked to certain building typologies that can be created in those areas, as well as architectural style options. Properties outside of those character areas are linked to building types as well, but they may use any architectural style. So it's a much more lenient outside of those areas. All right. The general design requirements is what you'll find in 5.6 of these updated standards. These are just general topics like proportion, massing, transparency, extra standards for buildings that are greater than or equal to 100,000 square feet. So building size affects on the community. These are just general tactics and techniques that will help Brevard create more human scale development. That's more pedestrian friendly. A lot of this is carryover from the existing Chapter 5 standards as well under this section. 5.7 talks about the building types. So this is where it gets a little bit more interesting. It takes an approach inspired by a form-based code. So developers can select from 14 potential building types depending on their location and the zoning. This is a series of flexible building types that all kind of, you know, help us move Brevard into a more desirable community character. There's an expansion of options that has been available under the. the existing Chapter 5. So there's actually more options now. And building types regulate certain building extensions and building frontages that can be applied to each of these buildings. From there, architectural styles is where this gets a little more innovative. So we heard from the public during all of our engagement that there were certain stylistic elements and architectural styles in certain existing buildings that really spoke Brevard and conveyed the idea of what Brevard should be architecturally. And so out of that, we looked at these six architectural styles that development could fall into. The first five here are much more historically rooted. So those are drawing on those historical past examples, but they can still be obviously emulated with modern construction, and we've built these standards with that acknowledgement. Brevard Contemporary is used to shape buildings going for a more contemporary or modern look, but it still requires important elements like pitch roofs and materials that are more representative in Brevard. So we expect most new development outside of those specific character areas to come in as Brevard Contemporary. Here's an example of kind of a cross-examination of what those six architectural styles might look like. These are just illustrations that are found in the Chapter 5 standards as kind of ideal visions of what these styles might look like. As far as the two character areas, downtown, we're looking at enforcing brick vernacular and colonial revival, and then the Piscata Gateway rustic frame vernacular and stone Masonry vernacular, which more closely align with the Piscata National Forest and Cradle of Forestry that we heard were great examples of inspiration for those areas. Everywhere else can pick from any of these styles, and it's designed to be more flexible, of course. Then going into building extensions in 5.9, these regulate kind of building elements that project beyond the facade. So there's a whole list of them here. I don't need to read those to you guys, but these correspond with different building types. So for example, civic buildings have certain requirements or permissions to use towers or cupolas to stand out as architectural landmarks and important buildings within the city, whereas other buildings would not have those privileges. But each one of these, based on building types, is either permitted, prohibited, or required. And this is the same for building frontages as well. Building frontages are kind of the features of the building that bridge the public side and the right-of-way, what that frontage looks like, and then the private side and what the private building looks like. Something interesting we wanted to point out here is the example of a courtyard as a frontage type. So we worked with your planning department to offer that as a new frontage type for Brevard. This could lead to some more unique multifamily buildings that really realize an indoor/outdoor style of mountain living and allow for more creative use of outdoor space on the property. Bringing this to a close, we have wall materials. So these really regulate the material application, durability, and authenticity here. So these are different materials that are profiled in the new Chapter 5 standards. So all of those that you can see listed there, it talks about those, talks about the organization those should be laid out in on the facade, just keeping the heavier materials toward the base of the building and the lighter materials toward the top for a visually cohesive look. It talks about color application and the kind of natural color palette that is appropriate in some areas for Brevard and kind of a more rustic, unpainted look that might be more appropriate near the Piscata Gateway. So we have that, and then we have regulations for substitute materials there, where they're appropriate, where they are able to be used when it's not feasible to use totally authentic materials, but they still have a proven record of durability. The last subsection on a detail here are the architectural elements. So these are additional specifications for elements like doors, columns, windows, things like that, that require a little bit extra detail to illustrate what we're fully talking about, but aren't firmly tied to a particular building style or architectural style. So there's some additional regulation located in this section. The last slide here, I just wanted to mention that we do have architectural standards that are linked to new definitions that are impacting your Chapter 2 as well. This is just for clarity's sake, to provide definitions for terms we use in the architectural standards, so everyone on the development side, on the review side, on the public side can understand exactly what's being talked about. And it also allowed us the opportunity to define some terms that were already used in Brevard's development code that have not been defined yet, such as facade. So some of those additional definitions are in there as well. So that was a great opportunity to touch the whole UDO. And then, of course, there's accompanying graphics provided to illustrate all of that.
With that, I think I'm going to turn it back to the planning commissioner. I think we're taking questions as you guys review it in the public hearing section, right?
Yes. So we will be, we have one more public hearing before this one. They're all kind of related today. So if it's all right with Madam Mayor, we would like to ask for questions to come with, once we walk through a little bit more of the detail as part of the public hearing.
Okay. I think that works well. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Well, then, we will move on to our public hearings. All right. It's going to be fast. Okay. No. All right. Our first public hearing is on the proposed amendment to the City of Brevard Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 19, Definitions and Response to Session Law 2024-57. And I believe, Emily, you're going to present this.
Yes. I've got a number of these. So this is related to a session law that we've talked about a little bit previously, but we're really trying to provide some more clarity. So in December 2024, the North Carolina General Assembly amended state law to greatly restrict local government discretion to amend local zoning ordinances. This session law, 2024-57, also referred to as Senate Bill 382, broadly defines downzoning and provides that local governments cannot adopt any downzoning without written consent from all affected owners. The precise interpretation and breadth of its impact of the law have been greatly debated already and are not perfectly clear. And so staff is seeking guidance from city council on how amendments to the UDO can be applied, given this change and the associated uncertainty in state law. And we have been advised by the city attorney that a great way to do that is to codify some definitions related to state law. So generally, downzoning refers to rezoning a property to a new zoning district that is less intense or less dense than the prior district. But North Carolina law defines downzoning much more broadly, especially after this recent change. So it now includes an amendment that creates, quote, "any type of nonconformity on land not in a residential zoning district." This broad definition significantly alters the applicability of the downzoning legislation, and it has even greater impacts as it now applies to local government-initiated amendments and not just third-party requests. North Carolina law has limited downzonings by third parties for quite some time to prevent an individual property owner from requesting a reduction of the development rights on their neighbor's property, for example, without their written consent. But prior to this state law, local government authority was allowed to do, to create downzonings without that additional level of scrutiny and that additional approval. So that the local governing board could make those legislative decisions to adjust the rules according to their local needs and priorities. But now, that exemption for local governments no longer applies. So, given that the new architectural standards will create nonconformities without written consent of all affected property owners, the implementation of the new standards has been modified from what was originally envisioned when we started this process, as I said over a year and a half ago. And this text amendment before you, this first text amendment before you, aims to provide context within the bounds of the new law in which we can apply those architectural standards and any other future text amendments. So it doesn't just apply to the architectural standards, but that's why it's before you today, because it's a very important thing for us to be able to, for application of any new text amendments or zoning changes that we, that may come about soon. Specifically, the text amendment before you includes two definitions. One is for new construction, and the other is for residential zoning district. And so we are prepared to have a conversation about the legal implications for that, and the city attorney is as well, so that we can be fully prepared as to what the ideal definition would be for that. Planning Board did discuss these at their February meeting and offered some recommendations regarding these definitions as well. And so we're not requesting any action at this time, but as we do have, it is a complicated one, happy to have a discussion right now and answer any questions.
All right. Well, at this point, we will officially open the public hearing. I know. We're ready to open the hearing, right, Emily?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're officially in the public hearing. No members of the public have signed up to speak. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. So we will now open it for discussion by council and questions. And we'll start with Mr. Baker.
Sure. I've got some questions, but I also, I think I just want to hear from the city attorney more generally on some of the trade-offs that we're talking about here. And I hope that's clear enough.
I'm not exactly sure what you mean by trade-offs. But what we're doing is, some of the definitions that are contained in the Senate bill, or I suppose we're calling it SL 57, leave some openings that would allow the city to continue to operate the way that we have been in certain circumstances. So for instance, the, specifically speaking, for instance, to the, what is a residential zoning district? These new law does not apply to residential zoning district. So therefore, if all of our districts, other than general industrial, contain residential uses, then if we define that as a residential zoning district, that would be, then most every district, we could still make the modifications that we have come to expect to be able to as a municipality, exercising our ability to determine what our community needs. There is the possibility that that will be, there will be at some point statewide definition of residential zoning district established, which may or may not comport with what we have. There's also the possibility that we could be targeted, for lack of a better word, for changing this definition as we have been.
Sure.
It, I haven't heard of any other city or municipality or doing this. I was on a phone call with about 200 planners and city attorneys from around the state. None of us understand what is really happening with this. And so we're just trying, all trying to come up with our own ways to allow us to continue to do what we've always done, which was take responsibility for making our communities the best communities we can.
Right.
And so this is one way to do it, if that's what you meant by trade-offs. And there is a little bit of a risk. The more, the proposed definition 3 is, I believe, the most, the largest allowance for us.
Right.
For the city. The option 1 is very, it steps out there a little bit further than perhaps we should. But nonetheless, that would allow us then to continue to make the necessary changes to all our, most of our zoning districts, if we, depending on how we define residential zoning district.
Yeah.
As far as the start of construction, that has to do with the nonconformity. Let Emily talk.
Yeah. This one in particular is very important for the architectural standards. Because creating, the question of applying all of our architectural standards to new construction only means that there's no nonconformity already there, right? So we're starting from the ground up. But there's a lot of times when from the ground up, you know, is where, for example, there's a building on Main Street that's just a facade. That would still, perhaps, should still be considered new construction, even though there is one wall standing. So we have proposed some other ways to be able to define something as a newly constructed building or structure for the purposes of all of our UDO, but specifically contemplated as it relates to the architectural standards. The proposed definition that we have in here is that if it's brand-new, obviously, it would be new construction, but also if you add on to the building over a certain threshold, or if you make a substantial improvement to the structure over a certain threshold, as well as having a certain number of trade permits from the county. So the example of that would be, if there's a building that's not valued very high, and they were just doing, they were just painting, or they were just making some minor repairs, then perhaps because the building itself was not valued very high, it would be pushed up into that substantially, substantial improvement threshold. If the building is only worth $50,000, and they're putting in $45,000 worth of work with new windows and things like that, the idea would be that they're just making superficial changes versus making a fully new structure. And so we've added that substantial improvements with the issuance of trade permits. So really saying it is a substantial change. But with those two, the addition and the substantial improvements, those are the ways that we would, are proposing that you classify something as new construction. We had this discussion with planning board, and planning board landed on a much higher threshold at 75%, but it's completely up to your discretion as to where you want that to go. Of course, the lower that threshold, the more likely it is to be considered a nonconformity or challenged, as Mac was saying. So all of these are kind of risk tolerance decisions and understanding kind of the impact of how we're instructed to administer the ordinance.
Right. I'm going to come back to that in just a second, but I do want to say, I think I, in the last meeting where we talked about this bill, I said it was, I used a very technical term, really dumb. And I stand by that. And part of the reason why it's very dumb is because, and Mr. Attorney, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that the bill does not define these things for us.
That's correct.
Things like what new construction might mean, or what a residential district is.
That is correct. And because of the way it came about through the General Assembly, essentially being introduced in the morning and passed in the afternoon, there's no history for us to look at to see what specific, what specifically it wanted to do. I will let you know, and I know y'all already know this, that there has already been a bill submitted to the General Assembly to overturn and mitigate Session Law 57. But that is, it hasn't been passed, and there's a long ways to go with those things. But it, part of the reason is because nobody, again, I was on a phone call with lawyers and planners from all over the state, and nobody could say what really caused this law to be passed, thereby giving us some idea what harm the General Assembly was trying to mitigate. to mitigate. And so, we, we need to create our own definitions if we're not given any, and that's what this proposal is, both of these is. And, and to allow us to proceed forward frankly with, with our architectural standards, with our, with the modifications we've been planning for years in the code, try to make it a more cohesive and better, better code. So.
Right.
This should allow us to do, well, it should allow us to do this, but.
Yeah, and I, I understand what Emily's saying is about, about risk tolerance, but I also feel like, given what the state has done, we could also just have our staff, we're not going to do this, but we could have our staff just sort of have these definitions in the back of their mind, but not actually have the fortitude to actually make the definition and pass it ourselves.
With the only, and that was actually discussed quite at length, and my, my opinion is that based on the language in 57, which says the laws are void from the adoption, if we were to make an ordinance change and rock along for 10 years, and somebody would be allowed to come up and say, no, you, you couldn't.
Right.
That, that ordinance would be invalid from the very beginning, then we're kind of in, we have, we, we would have some issues. So, this way is one way that we can get a little bit more certainty, a little bit more certitude backing the planning department's decisions.
So, we're doing the smart and prudent thing to define these versus the dumb and fast thing that the state did? You don't have to answer that. I do want to ask a question about the new construction and the 75 percent thing, because that does seem high to me. You know, I, I think the party project comes to mind for me, because I don't know what the percentage on that would be, but that is a, you know, I think that should be covered under anything like new construction.
So, I will say that this, we still have the definition of substantial improvement in our ordinance. So, the way that we address non-conformities in our ordinance right now still applies. So, if a, a project makes a substantial improvement, which is 50 percent or greater, then they are required to bring their non-conformities into compliance. This would then say that if you are considered not new construction, you have to bring everything into compliance. So, it's really just another level of scrutiny for us to be able to, to make some of these, and a way for us to then implement the architectural standards that were not predated by this ordinance. So, the substantial, all of our.
I'm sorry, yeah, can you explain the difference?
All of our existing non-conformities, non-conformity requirements still stand. So, everything else still exists, if it's previously in our ordinance, we have not created any non-conformities by changing the development code.
Okay.
So, everything, any project that makes a substantial improvement, which is 50 percent or greater, has to bring their non-conformities into compliance to the greatest extent possible, that remains the same. This is saying that if your structure is brand-new, or if your structure is, meets these higher thresholds, then it's considered new construction and should also apply for the, the architectural standards also need to apply.
Okay. So, the new construction provision is, or definition would really only be applicable for the architectural.
It is most important for the, for the architectural standards. That term is used throughout our code.
Right.
But, the way that, the reason why we're, we're having this discussion right now about different thresholds is because of the architectural standards.
Okay.
Because the idea is to not create any more non-conformities.
Right.
Because that's what's, that is what is specifically listed as a downzoning. So, the idea is to create fewer non-conformities.
By classifying.
By classifying them as new construction. So, in other words, you're going to have fewer qualifying buildings.
Right.
That have to adapt the new standard, architectural standards, for instance, because.
The higher the percentage.
The higher the percentage is.
Right, okay.
And then it would apply primarily to new constructions, which are okay.
Okay.
Correct.
And one, one last thing for me, I think you mentioned the bill that's been introduced to repeal the prior bill, and I think I read that Representative Clampett is a sponsor of that.
He is a sponsor of that.
It is, and it is on your consent agenda as a resolution of support.
Yeah, I just want to publicly thank State Representative Clampett for.
He was very responsive in addressing this.
And that's all for me.
Mr. Daniel?
Well, I would agree that, you know, if you pass a law that the people who are subject to that law don't understand it, then you probably didn't understand it either. So, they've obviously had some work to do on that. I think this is an important issue. The, this project or this concept of more clearly defining what the bar is architecturally speaking, has been looked at for years, and I'm happy to see we're getting to this point. The one thing I'm not, I, I would like it more clearly stated, let's say, so, the 75 percent construction on existing buildings, that triggers all of the, what am I looking for here, all of the non-conformity regulations.
That's correct. So, when there is a new construction, they are required to come into compliance with the UDO. They can only build in compliance with the UDO.
So, even though you're talking about the architectural standards, we're talking about everything.
That is correct.
You got to have the fence right, you got to have the.
Correct.
Setbacks right, you got to do, you know, you got to.
Correct.
Parking in the back, the whole nine yards. Yeah, the, coming from a career in construction, I like the 75 percent better, but it does seem sort of high. I mean, a high bar to have to achieve. I mean, it seems to me a minimal effect, that maybe two-thirds might be better, but I understand the issue at hand of, you know, maybe at this point, that's what we want, you know, not necessarily have a huge effect, but I think, I would, I would consider two-thirds personally, but.
Mr. Morrow?
Well, I think most people don't appreciate what the 50 percent rule means, and then the fact that they don't understand it, but that 50 percent rule throws you into compliance, where otherwise you, if you're going to start over, then you've got to be in 100 percent compliance. So, it's advantage perhaps if, to use what's there, use what you have to get at least 50 percent out of it. And, and then with the architectural standard, it'd have to be GR eight or something, correct? Because it doesn't apply to GR four or any other standard?
It, it would still apply to all the zoning districts, but it would not apply to certain types of buildings.
Residential buildings.
Correct, residential building.
Okay, so, and I tend to think those are predominantly in.
They are predominantly.
In Arizona, okay. So, okay, so it's to the building itself and not the district?
That's correct.
Gotcha, okay.
Ms. Holder?
Thank you all for the, the work that has been put in. Is there a definition for substantial income?
The substantial.
I'm sorry, substantial improvement, I'm thinking about money.
Yes, it's 50 percent. So, if it's a 50 percent, if you're investing 50 percent of the building value.
So, I'm thinking about Rosenwall, that's where I live and, and work. Given the uniqueness of Rosenwall, as indicated in the report, how does that community maintain its characterization? Say, if somebody wanted to paint their home and keep the same color that they have, or make an improvement that, you know, is, is still the same?
This goes back to Councilman Morrow's question, where it, we cannot apply any architectural standards to any structures that serve, are one, two, three, and four dwelling unit structures. So, a single-family home would be completely, is completely exempt from all architectural requirements, and that is in the Chapter Five, which will be the next public hearing.
You said there's a next public hearing?
Yeah, right after this. We just kind of split it up, because they are.
Technically two different things.
They're technically two different issues.
Okay.
And, and we know that this conversation about definitions applies much more broadly than just architectural standards, so we pulled it out separately.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Mr. Wise?
This may be a question for you, Mac, but if there's pending legislation about this bill happening, is it at all prudent to wait to spend the time and money to change all of our ordinances now, or is there, I guess the big question, is there a time period where, knowing that there's legislation that could affect this, do, do we get leeway to wait until that's settled?
So, would be a compliance.
If we had some idea what was happening down in Raleigh, I would say yes. I mean, just being real, the, this, the bill is House Bill 24 that Clampett put in, and that Representative Clampett put in, it was referred to the Committee on Judiciary III on February 3rd of 2025, and it's sitting there.
So, it's been over a month?
It's been over a month, sitting in a committee. We don't, and then, and then if it passes there, it goes to Housing and Development, and then it's favorable to Rules, Calendar, and Operation of the House. So, it's got a, it's got a bit of a ways to go. And our, I don't know that there's, we stand to lose anything, really, by creating these There is some give and take as to the thresholds to, after which non-conformities need to be brought in. But, I, I can tell you that we probably need to consider that definition. At any rate, during Halleen, we ran into numerous issues with houses that needed to be reconstructed because they were, they had substantial damage. And we're talking about the difference, though, between a 51 percent of the value, as opposed to 49 percent of the value, as to whether they had to come into, so, defining it more clearly and purposefully probably is good on a lot of different levels. Whether it, it causes this to us to be more able to implement the form-based code or not. That's my, and I hadn't discussed that question, you always ask the good questions, Lauren. I haven't discussed that, discussed that question with Emily, but I would imagine she probably feels the same way. Certainty is better than uncertainty, and especially this revaluation that went in, it shocked a lot of people with the amounts of values, but all of a sudden, people are going to have houses where they thought they would be able to put in, where their, their values were maybe a lot lower than what they thought they were going to be, and so they go to paint their house, and they find out that the cost of the painting is going to exceed the, the.
It's going to trigger.
It's going to trigger the substantial compliance. And it, we, we're seeing it more and more in, in areas. So, I, I don't think there's anything much to lose from making a definition. Now, whether that's 75 percent, whether it's two-thirds, or whether it stays around 50 percent, that's a higher pay grade than mine.
Well, and that's, that actually leads into my next, I don't know if it's a question, I just wanted to say that I, I tend to agree with Gary about maybe something closer to a 65, two-thirds. I think this is always going to be a balance between what, what we want for the city and the burden to the property owner, and I think we have to really think about that, but to me, 75 is a, is a tick high, so, I kind of feel like, with you, Gary, more like that two-thirds feels a little more comfortable to me. That's all.
Could I ask one more question? I'm sorry, I know we're in the weeds a little bit, but I, since I brought up the party building, I, I am curious what that building, like what was the percentage for that building?
I don't know, I'd have to come up with that.
Okay.
Project cost.
Okay. I'm curious about that, so I'll follow up with you on that.
All right, thank you, Emily. There is no action on this tonight, this will come back to council for an actual vote on this public hearing item at our, I believe it's our April 7th meeting. I think at this point, before we go into the next public hearing.
Why don't we come out of that public hearing?
We, we already did.
Oh, did you vote to get?
Yes, we already voted out.
I was, I was all excited.
Don't fall asleep at the end down there, Mr. Attorney. Yes, we, we, I was in and out, yes.
You closed it.
We closed it before the discussion.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, thank you. At this point, we're going to take a 10-minute break before we go into our next public hearing. At this point, we're going to take a 10-minute break before we go into our next public hearing.
It wasn't all that.
On the architectural legacy of specific character areas. I will note that the version in your packet today is a little bit different than it would have been pre-session law 2024-57, which as I, we just discussed, changed our ability to enact amendments to our development regulations. So the version presented before you tonight only has two character areas instead of the four that were initially envisioned. So we have included downtown and Pisgah Gateway, but two of the character areas, specifically the Railroad Avenue District and the US 64 Highway Corridor, we really are not able to adopt in response to this state law change. But I will say, we do have all of those so that when and if we're able to adopt those and to be able to put those in action, we have them ready to go. And Planning Board has seen the full draft, including those, and so we've been been in conversation with that for quite some time. We also have the architectural standards. The applicability section of the architectural standards is a little bit different in response to state law, specifically applying to new construction. We also have a provision that we wanted to highlight for you today that talks about how the applicability of the standards can also apply to things that you're specifically doing as they relate to architectural changes. So, just one second, just get there very quickly. The new, the chapter 5.2 with applicability applies to new construction and also to any new changes to building facades, including but not limited to the replacement of exterior building elements. So this is really saying that only the element that's being changed or the material that's being changed of that building would then be subject to the regulations. So if you are proposing to come in and change your, the color of your building or the siding of your building, that would still be required to come into compliance with this ordinance, even if you did not have, meet the definition of new construction. So that's to say, if you're making a change anyways, we need to make sure that that change is in compliance. So that is a little bit of a difference as well from the way that we had initially intended, but we believe that this will be able to accomplish the goals of the project and be able to move us forward. So the updating the UDOs architectural standards has been a component of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan for quite some time. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan Goal Number Two is to encourage a development pattern that respects Brevard's sense of place and prioritizes livable communities. It also calls for a develop, excuse me, expanding housing opportunities for all residents while preserving the character of Brevard and its neighborhoods, considering the development of a form-based code for downtown, establishing overlay districts for the Asheville Highway Corridor and Pisgah Forest area with form-based elements, and then encouraging building and site upgrades downtown and in other key commercial areas. So in the version that you have, just a couple notes. If the section title is highlighted, which is all of chapter five and then all of the new definitions, then that means the entire thing is new, I just didn't print it blue. But then there are a number of other changes that are proposed kind of in response to the architectural standards, for example, some tweaks to kind of our, in chapter 17, what our development plan requirements are, things like that, to be able to implement the architectural standards as presented to you today. So we do not have any, we're not requesting any action, but we do have staff and all of the Plaservia team to be able to help answer any questions and talk about the architectural standards that are before you.
Okay, at this point, we will open the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now open. No members of the public have signed up. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is now closed. We will open it up for council questions, and we'll start with Mr. Wise.
We were talking during our break, Emily and Paul and your team is like, thank God for you people. Because no normal person would ever do this kind of work. We appreciate you're not normal in any way. Okay, so I do, I don't know if I have questions, I have observations since I'm a snotty architect. But I want to highlight some things that I think are really important from what we've seen today, and one is this idea of preservation, but also enhancement. I think the enhancement to me is is a really key piece, and I say that because I think one of the things that gave me a little pause was, especially in the downtown district, was the emphasis on on brick. I completely understand where that came from. I grew up in Charleston, South Carolina, and saw both the positive and negative effects of really hammering one typology. And then I also live in Nashville, where a really eclectic architectural fabric is really vibrant. Saying that, I think the addition of things like courtyard frontage and the ability of storefront or shopfront embellishments or enhancements for the character of that store kind of made, got us over the finish line with my concerns about using, kind of sticking to one material. So I think those are, those are going to be really important things to consider when we get proposals in front of us moving forward, especially in the down, it's the downtown, I think, that we need to be most careful of because it's the most precious commodity for us. So I think those are the ones that are most important. And I think most importantly is really about the building typology, the proportion, the massing, for me, the datum lines established, the how they address the street. Those to me are the primary things that I think have done a fantastic job, Plaservia, thank you, of really addressing these so that everyone can understand it. So they're not really changes, just observations about, this can be pretty tricky, you know, and I also want to say, there's also, as I mentioned before, the balance of preserving and enhancing our downtown and the burden to our owners, and I think also like the craft. I think we've all been to places where you can throw up a brick facade all day long, it doesn't look like an historical, or not historical, but a, you know, a preservativeal piece. And I think those are just things to keep in our heads, I think, is that, that's kind of the bulk of that. So no real questions, just snotty architectural observations.
If I may just add on a little bit, the, I should have mentioned this, the downtown character area boundaries are not exactly what staff was and was thinking about. We had initially wanted to, and we talked with Planning Board about this in November, before the state law changed in December, we wanted to take the existing standards that are within the downtown development overlay district, and which are very small, there's just maybe two or three, and the, but the biggest one is that the building has to, the maximum setback, the build-to line, and take those standards and put them into DMX, into our base zoning district, and then apply a much tighter architectural character area for downtown that was not as broad as the current downtown development overlay district. Unfortunately, because we cannot put those into DMX, that would be considered creating a nonconformity, most likely in a non-residential zoning district, so that would be, we would not be able to do so. So instead, we are adapting these standards to be put into the downtown development overlay district, instead of creating a new architectural overlay district as we had initially anticipated. So it's a little bit different, but it does mean that the character of downtown can still be preserved and enhanced, as you've talked about. It just has a little bit broader of a scope than than staff probably would have, would have proposed initially.
Okay. I'll just add one more thing, the Senate bill is stupid. Thank you. You stole that.
Ms. Holder?
I don't have any questions, thank you for everything.
Mr. Morrow?
But it seems to me that because, and I use the word most precious, I guess, on the design, on the downtown tour, we were able to see the sort of the unique brick patterns that were, that sort of distinguished the downtown. So my hope is that at least if someone is going to invest in downtown, that's going to, that's going to stimulate them to be creative, and rather than just a brick pattern that's, has no flair. The downtown brick has flair, and hopefully that's the momentum. Is that what is really?
Oh, for sure, definitely.
So we, we sort of accomplished that by, by, by this whole effort to recognize those unique features, whether it's in here and required or not.
Right, and what, one of the things that we were particularly excited about as staff was the more robust definitions. And so the, now, the definitions all include a lot of illustrations and examples, and so we're able to really highlight the uniqueness as, in those examples as well. Like, there's a whole section on brick bond type, right, and the patterns that come within that. And so being able to exemplify that visually will then be able to stimulate some of that, even if we're not requiring you to, to use a specific type of, of pattern, we're able to spark that interest.
And it's whether you're, or the places, we do have architectural standards like, like Toxaway, they have their own standard of, of logy look and, and that sort of thing. And so to some degree, I guess, Strauss Park. So, but, and we also recognize the differences between downtown and Pisgah Forest District. So being able to separate those out and, and treat them differently is a plus. Thank you.
Mr. Daniel?
Yeah, I, I agree with what's been said that, you know, downtown or the city of Brevard is, is a special place, and I think it's a place that, I think what we're saying, one of the things that we're saying is that we believe in this town, and we believe that it should be the best that it can be, and we need to protect those aspects of it that make it that. The other thing I'd say is, you know, when I ran for city council 10 years ago, it was because I was upset about the US 64 Highway Corridor, and so I'm not happy to see us having to cut that, because that's still something I'm concerned about. And I live in the Railroad Avenue District, so I am concerned about that as well. So I look forward to the time that we're able to include those into our vision for what is the best Brevard can do.
Well, and I will, I will say, part of, you know, the process we went through was being able to adopt, as you all did, adopt those visual standards. The visual standard, excuse me, the visual guidelines. That document is really meant to be the example of what we want, and we can use that in our conversations with developers, we can use that in our conversations related to conditional zoning districts, we can use those kind of things moving forward. And so though we aren't able to take that last step due to state law, we're, we're still able to use a lot of this. And like I said, we do have all of those upstairs in the planning department, ready, chomping at the bit, ready to be able to, to bring them before you for adoption as soon as we're able to.
Thank you.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, first, I want to echo what others have said, that, you know, the work, the quality of the work in here, I think, is, you know, it's, it's amazing. It's really impressive, and I am not a snooty architect like Lauren. Snotty? Oh, snotty, sorry. Excuse me, snotty architect. But, you know, even I could, could appreciate, you know, all the, the great work that was in there. And I do think it, it really nails what makes Brevard special from a, from a visual standpoint and a lot of the, the built environment around us that, that we all have fallen in love with. I do have just a few questions, and I think I'm going to go from specific to more general. So the, the most specific, I think, is what you said about if someone is replacing the, some exterior building elements, like either their painting or the siding, would that then trigger all of the architectural, explain that, so if you're just painting?
No, so that's our way of, of having some compliance
Right.
without triggering that nonconformity conversation.
Right.
So we're trying to say that if you're making a change, if you're painting your building, for example, you could only change your building in a way that complies with the ordinance. We're not going to let you paint your green building hot pink, because that doesn't comply, but we would still, and, and so we'd be able to, to make those changes only, we, we would be able to apply the changes only related to what your modification is.
Right, okay.
Yes, and so that's, like I said, another way for us to address some of the nonconformities without them being nonconformities and triggering compliance in other ways.
Right, okay. And then you mentioned the other character areas that we wished we could include.
Yes.
Can you explain why, in a little more detail, why we feel like we can't do that right now?
Sure. So part of that down, of what a downzoning is, is being more restrictive or creating nonconformities in a non-residential zoning district. That is what is included in state law. In order to adopt architectural standards for those specific areas, we would need to adopt a new overlay zoning district. So we would have to go through a rezoning and then be able to apply some additional standards that we know would create nonconformities.
And am I not correct that you can create an overlay that isn't associated with a zoning district?
Correct, correct. It's a new zoning district that sits on top.
Right.
Right, so the downtown development overlay district is, you can be in DMX, Downtown Mixed Use Zoning District, which is a base zoning district, without being in that downtown development overlay district.
Okay.
And so by the way that we were going to adopt specific architectural standards, because all, actually, both the railroad area and the corridor, 64 corridor, both have a lot of different zoning districts within them. So we would have to adopt it as a brand-new zoning district that could be considered a downzoning.
Even if that was an overlay that spanned across zoning districts?
Yes.
Okay.
Overlay is considered rezoning.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. And the, how does that change, considering the public hearing we just had on the definition of the residential zoning district? Would that change?
It could change, depending on what you decide is considered a residential zoning district. We could potentially adopt some of the architectural standards in a different, we, we could perhaps put in an overlay. We would certainly want to work with the city attorney to make sure that we're, we're covering that, but we needed to make sure that we got that guidance from you before we even proposed.
Right.
Anything like that.
Okay. So we're getting more general. I, I think one, one of my biggest concerns here is just our ability to respond to permit requests when we get them, and it's, you know, again, this might be because I'm not a snotty architect, but it's, it is, there's a, it's dense, there's a lot here. So as an amateur, or as a person who doesn't understand this stuff quite as well, it, it is, it feels a little bit intense to me. So, and while we are wanting to protect our character, we don't want to make it so odious to build or to develop in the city of Brevard that we just shut down all development altogether, obviously. I don't think that's anybody's intent here. So it's okay to have rules if you can quickly respond to the people who need clarification about those rules. So does staff, does planning staff feel like we have the, both the expertise and the, the people on staff to be able to respond to permits quickly?
I might let Paul handle that. I believe yes, but I will let the planning director address that, or specifically.
That's a really good question, and it's one that we didn't take lightly either. And we have now an architect planner on staff, which we're really happy to have her, and she's helped us walk through this, as well as Plaservia too, and all of us on staff feel comfortable implementing these, these new regulations, if asked.
And have we done any sort of analysis on like how it might affect the turnaround times for permits?
I think it's going to lengthen them a little bit, but it'll be well worth it.
Yeah.
Have a higher product in, in return.
Right. Okay. And I, I, you know, I do have some concerns there, just, and, and not with the, with the plans themselves or the standards, just with the speed with which we can talk to developers or potential builders to make sure they're comfortable and they understand, they have clarity on what we're asking of them. And, and so I, I guess I don't really have a, a, you know, a specific question follow-up there, but it is something that I'm going to personally be watching. It's not concerning enough that I, I think we should throw this thing out, of course, but I do think that we need to constantly be thinking about how we're balancing, yes, getting the kind of development that we want with making sure we're not putting too many roadblocks in the way of
Right.
people spending money in our town.
I think when our architectural standards especially are put in N-code, and we have a lot of hyperlinks and hover overs, it's going to be a lot easier to navigate than it is, you know, a booklet like that, trying to design a
Right.
project.
Yeah. And I do think the, the provision, I'll compliment state law, since I've been calling them dumb. I, I do think that it is smart that, you know, single-family homes through quadruplexes, you know, are, you know, have some greater freedom, because that is, you know, a major challenge in our entire country, but certainly for Brevard as well, that we need small development, we need incremental development, and we don't really need additional roadblocks in the way of those things. So I'm glad that, that this doesn't apply to that, and I hope the public understands that as well. Similar to that, and this is my last question, you know, we've heard the term form-based code talked about with, with this, and it seems like this is sort of a, a step along the road to potentially adopting form-based code. I do think that before we get to the end of that road, we end up in a place where we have both form-based code and land use code, which again, seems like more intensity in terms of the rules that we have. So I think I would appreciate, and this is very big picture, a broader discussion with the planning department and the city manager and all of city council about like, is form-based code where we're trying to go? Like, do we want to make that leap? And, and I'm not saying it should be overnight, it shouldn't be overnight, but i- if that is the goal and the vision, then this, it, it helps create context for what we're doing here. And, and so I, and I hope, I'm, you know, a big proponent of, of form-based code, it makes a lot of sense to me, so I would love to have that discussion, because I think with both, it does feel like we have just a, a ton of rules. And if we can loosen up some of the land use rules while keeping or adding even form-based rules, you know, I think that I would be interested in how that mix sort of helps encourage development, but the right kind of development going forward. So I'll follow up with Wilson on that. That's all.
Thank you. All right, that is the end of the questions on that public hearing item, and that will come back for action by council at our next meeting. All right, we are moving on to the consent and information agenda. The following items are on the consent agenda. One, the tax settlement report of February 2025. Two, approval of the MOU with Mountain True for Wilson Road boat ramp improvements. Three, declaration of city-owned property as surplus. Four, sewer pump stations rehabilitation project easements. Five, resolution directing the clerk to investigate the sufficiency of petition requesting a non-contiguous annexation, John Valenti and MTS Properties LLC, Reservoir Road and Hampton Road. Six, police purchase from ABC funds. Seven, resolution in support of House Bill 24, an act to restore the authority for local governments to initiate downzoning. Eight, authorize city manager to approve a contract with Barry Dunn for police department workplace study. Nine, Rosenwald Community Advisory Board minutes, October 17, 2024. Ten, Rosenwald Community Advisory Board meeting notes, November 21, 2024. Eleven, Council Downtown Master Plan Committee minutes, January 8, 2025. Twelve, Council Parks, Trails and Recreation Committee minutes, January 15, 2025. Thirteen, Council Finance, Human Resources and Citizen Appointment Committee minutes, January 27, 2025. Fourteen, Council Public Safety Committee minutes, January 27, 2025. Fifteen, Council Public Works and Utilities Committee minutes, February 5, 2025. Sixteen, Correspondence, no action, offered as information only, A, ABC Board minutes, January 23, 2025, and B, ABC Board minutes, February 27, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. All right, moving on to new business. The first item is approval of two regular part-time housekeeping positions, and I believe the city manager is going to walk us through this.
Selena Coffey is going to walk us through this item, Mayor.
Oh, all right, well, Selena, walk us through.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As you're aware, housekeeping services for the city have historically been completed using a combination of C- as well as outsourcing opportunities. Most recently, City Hall, the Police Department, Mary C. Jenkins, Community Center have been outsourced, while the depot, the French Broad Community Center, the sports complex, the Public Works Building, and water and sewer plants have been maintained by city personnel. Currently, the Mary C. Jenkins Community Center is the only city facility that is being cleaned by an outsourced vendor. A couple of months ago, staff issued a request for a qualification for provision of housekeeping services for several of the city's facilities. This RFQ was designed for the city to be more intentional with regard to choosing the facilities that could potentially be outsourced again, based on cost estimates and the services rendered. Since last year, mid-2024, when our housekeeping provider stopped providing services, we have been forced to utilize staff, pull staff, actually, from Public Works in, in the various divisions, and this has added to the, the workload of those folks and has required the city to regularly pay overtime. Furthermore, utilizing our staff has taken them from other projects that you are very well aware of, such as the Heart of Brevard Walkability Study, as well as Expeditions Installation of, of steep bumps on Probar, and those are just a couple of the examples that have taken Public Works away from. Once we received bids, we began analysis and poured over a number of proposals to analyze the options for improvement in service levels. As you'll note in the lower half of your staff report there, you will find a narrative regarding our financial analysis. Within the analysis, staff compared the, the bids, as well as our current use of Public, Public Works personnel, and considered the alternative and considered the alternative of simply adding positions to city staff. One, first of those being a full-time position, and the second of adding two part-time positions for housekeeping. In evaluating the options, staff has come to the, the conclusion that hiring of two part-time positions would provide the most benefits to the city in terms of better coverage for times when an employee is, is ill or time away for vacation, as well as provide better services. The financial impact of hiring two part-time positions, including wages and benefits, would be approximately $82,000 a year, with a net increase of roughly $50,000 after accounting for offsetting funds that are currently budgeted for outsourced housekeeping. In comparing our current use of public work staff to this proposal, I think this is a very important amount to have in the front of your, your minds as you consider the proposal, is that we are currently paying roughly $41,000 in, in overtime alone for Public Works to perform the services. Adding two part-time positions would provide for a net increase of approximately $32,000. Now, although our analysis reveals that adding the two positions is more expensive than outsourcing, and that, we want to be clear about that, we are recommending this option because, because we believe that the, that this provides the opportunity for higher service levels and intangible benefits, such as better control over services, more flexibility in handling events and emergencies, and reliability in service delivery. Staff has proposed a resolution, and we are proposing to you the approval of creation of two part-time housekeeping positions. And I would like to thank you for the opportunity to present this and, and give staff's thoughts on this agenda item, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Selena. Council, do I have a motion to approve the resolution creating the two part-time housekeeping positions?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll open it up for discussion, Mr. Morrow.
I think, you know, it's a step in the right direction when you can control, better control what you need, when you need it. And, and no doubt, in the future, may be full-time employees. It's a way to bring people into, into, in helping your recruiting for full-time employees.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I think if you look at the, the added facilities that we've had over the last few years, you know, I think we were pretty honest throughout that time that, you know, positions like this were going to be required. And so it makes sense that this is coming to us. And I do want to thank all the Public Works employees who were filling in. I know it's probably not their first choice of duty, so. And, yeah, I think that speaks to, you know, the team effort in getting things like this done when we have to. So thank you for that. I, just one question, where, where would these positions be in the organizational structure?
They will fall under the Public Works Building and Grounds Department, but they will appear as fractional positions across all the benefiting departments. And what I mean by that is if we determine that administration, say, benefits from 10% of their work, then we will budget a tenth of a position in the Administration Department and then transfer that money over to Buildings and Grounds to actually pay these folks. And that way, we can keep the impact to each single department manageable.
Right, thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Daniel?
I think obviously this is something that's needed, and I think we should carry forward with it.
Ms. Holder?
Thank you for the details. You said that the two-part-time positions are $82,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And did I hear you say that Rosenwald has their own?
They currently pay, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, $50, $5,300 for, for their just cleaning. And I know that we, we've been talking about
Yeah.
assistance in the kitchen, so they're, they're not, they're doing the basic,
Okay.
basic
Okay.
level of service there.
All right. And is that included in this or no? Is it a separate budget?
It, it, currently, that, that amount is in the, in the community center budget.
Okay.
We would look to, to consider, you know, how we go about pulling that in as a, as an overall end, end of the day goal.
Okay, so to be a part of this budget?
Well, yes, but as, as the manager was sharing with you, we will be doing direct allocations, or what I would call cost allocating, the percentages based on the amount of time spent.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else, Ms. Holder?
No, thank you.
Mr. Wise?
Yeah, I think this is a long time coming. I do also want to thank the Public Works people that have chipped in because I know they're working extra hours and sometimes extra pay is less than all the time. So, yeah, I think this is a great move.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next item of new business. This is the Betsy Smith MOU easement for 46 Grove Street.
Yes, ma'am, and I'll ask Becky to pull up the image on the screen. So this is a long time coming. It's probably been about two years since Ms. Smith stood before you and shared information about the sinkhole that was emerging in her yard. Mayor, I know that me and you went out to visit her, and you might have gone out to visit her another time separately. And Wesley and Cliff and those guys have been out there a lot observing the sinkhole over the years. But the reason why it took us two years to get here is because there's not clarity, and in fact, there's a dispute between us and her about who's responsible for the sinkhole. And I think that both of us have a strong case that a judge and jury would probably be very keen to hear. But I don't want to do that, and so instead, I'm coming to you all to ask if you'll approve the terms of a compromise agreement we've made with her that will result in a fixed sinkhole, a saved house, and clear ownership of the infrastructure. And so the terms that I'm asking you all to approve are that, Becky, if you can, yeah, if you will give Mac and I the authority to negotiate this agreement with her, that would see her grant us the easement that is depicted on the screen in the hashed area, pay for half, pay for the cost of the engineering that's required to make this repair, waive us, waive any liability that we might be assigned for the construction of the project and the presence of the sinkhole for two years, and relieve us of any incidental costs, like the cost of replacing the fence and so forth that will have to come out to make the repair. And we, in turn, will repair the sinkhole and repair the failing pipes underneath it. And if you can go to the other image, please. Emily? Up, let's see, where would it be? There we go. Replace the failing infrastructure that's depicted there in blue with new infrastructure depicted there in red. And the reason why I think it is important for us to take on this responsibility is because if we don't, we might have a collapsing house that would be a housing code enforcement nightmare. And B, because if we don't fix it, we might have flooding in other areas of that neighborhood. And so I think that we have great incentive to take on this repair in exchange for the easement and the other concessions that I just mentioned, even though it's on private property. And so with all that said, I need you all to agree with me because this was an unbudgeted expense. We will be paying for it out of funds that are budgeted for repairs to underground infrastructure, but this specific project wasn't, but wasn't foreseen, so it's not in there. But also, just because I won't, you ought to say that this is okay since it has that, that private property circumstance to it. And so that's why I'm here. I'm interested to hear what you all think about this deal and the terms that I've outlined to you.
All right, council. Do I have a motion to approve the attached resolution endorsing the terms of the MOU and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we will open it for discussion, Ms. Holder.
Is this the same property we talked about like last year?
Yes.
Okay. Glad to see we have an opportunity to perhaps work it out. So I don't have any questions, thank you.
Mr. Wise?
There's a, like, big old right angle. Is, is that bad? I mean, I'm a little worried, like, I think it's going to work, but that, that big new right angle, that water's coming around, and I'm sure it's been engineered, it's just, I know when we first looked at this, we think that line was kind of cutting right under the house, and someone probably moved it illegally, but.
Are you referring to the right angle in the street there?
And the new sewer line. The new pipe and catch basin, there's, it goes. I'm just making sure that's cool.
Is that that angle, there'll be a box?
Yeah.
It will be as hard as it looks on the line.
Okay. And then I'll, I'll just say, the, the other thing is, I think it's, for reasons even larger than this, that this is a good example of compromise and the power of compromise. That's all.
All right, Mr. Morrow?
Well, you can, you can tell that this was a natural creek before in the ground. It was, and, and that lot was one of the last ones built on in that division. So it was a lot that probably the developer never thought it would even be built on.
Yeah.
The problems there with that natural, used to be called Silverstein Creek, was a, is, is a natural area that we'll probably always have problems with more water. I don't have a problem with trying to work it out with her, because she's in a pickle. It wasn't her fault that, that she got, that the developer did what he did, and, yeah, so.
Mr. Daniel?
I used to live on Johnson Street. I was sitting in my living room during a heavy rainstorm and looked out in my front yard, and there was a three-foot column of water shooting straight up out of the ground from a collapsed line. It was clearly, I was told it wasn't city's responsibility, and it clearly wasn't because it was built out of old water heaters. But my point being
Nice.
Point being is, is this is not an uncommon situation in the city of Brevard. Am I, I'm asking Wesley, if, I mean, how many, I have a concern here that I understand the reasoning here, but, you know, I also know that this is not an isolated situation. And if we take on this one, are we going to have to take on all of them? So I have a concern here. And it's unresolved at the moment, so I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I guess I'll pick up right there and just ask, in the city manager's viewpoint, what distinguishes this situation from some other situation like what Gary is talking about?
So I just want to state explicitly that this is an individual deal and not a policy, and that I maintain the position that private, infrastructure on private property is privately owned unless proven otherwise via an easement, which is things we're getting in return for taking on this project. Or if the, the property was developed before the time of sophisticated easements like we have now, some sort of plat or something that we can prove was dedicated and accepted by the city, which, neither of which exist in this case. But the reason why I think this is different is because, A, I think that it would be more of a headache than taking on this project would be if the house collapses for us. And two, because I do think you, the property owner, could make a case that because this piece of infrastructure accept, accepts lots of water from public properties, both the street, city-owned street rights of ways and the nearby Silvermite property, that it is public responsibility. And so for those two reasons, which both in my opinion are essentially risk management reasons, that's why I'm making this recommendation. But I acknowledge that that does open up the risk for other properties, asking us to do the same thing. And I think that we'd have to deal with each of those on a case-by-case basis under the assumption that we're not going to do it unless there are extenuating circumstances significant like this.
And I guess my follow-up question would be for Mac, the city attorney, on, are there parts of the MOU that you feel like help explain to some potential future property owner why this is not city policy and why their situation may not be similar?
If someone else came to the city?
Yes.
With the exact, I, first off, I think that having the exact same situation is going to be really rare. You know, this, in my view, what happened here was that this, was that a contractor, well after the storm drain was put in, came and built a house over top of it without telling anybody. And it was storm water from the private residences that were located here. So it's a, it's a much, it's a very specific set of facts
Right.
in this case. I think that, I, I, I'm going to have to look at it again and see what specific language. But I think the combination of that, plus the fact the water comes down the hill from, essentially from Main Street down to this point, that this is also going to alleviate storm, potential stormwater problems further up the, up the line. It may be even the Johnson Street problem that, that Gary was talking about. I think it is clear, and I appreciate you asking the question, that this is a very unique situation. It required a very unique response. And that this, while, while not perfect, and certainly is not a concession that we own that storm drain that we have never owned.
Right.
Nonetheless, this is a way to fix a problem for a, for a citizen, give ourselves some relief, and, and address a contentious situation by compromise. So if that, it's a long-winded way
Yeah.
of saying what I needed to say, but, I mean, the language doesn't specifically, it, it certainly says, nobody's liable for anything.
Right.
And that's, and that is important. As far as its applicability to other sites, I weren't really looking at that when I, when I wrote it. And so I'm going to have to look at.
Right.
I, I'll look through it while y'all are finishing up your conversation, but I think it is probably specific enough to not be in, specific to this. it is probably specific enough to not be in, specific to this property enough to not be an issue.
And one follow-up to that is, so the, under the discussion, it says, you know, this would release the city from any legal and financial liability regarding the sinkhole, stormwater infrastructure, or repair activities on her property. That is for future legal and financial liabilities as well, right?
Yes.
For the stormwater infrastructure.
That is correct.
Okay. And then she will own, the ownership will be clear on the upgraded catch basin, or the stormwater infrastructure will be owned by her.
No, it'll be owned by the city.
The catch basin will be owned.
The catch.
By her and her responsibility. The pipe from the catch basin to the street will be ours.
Okay, so the catch basin will be privately owned. Everything else will be city-owned and we will have an easement to reflect that.
Correct.
Okay. I think those are, those are all my questions.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel? All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, our third item of new business is the city council approval of electronic-only advertising for construction contracts. Mr. Manager?
Yes, ma'am. This one probably could've gone on consent, but I wanted to make sure we were transparent about what we were doing since this concerns public notices. We're requesting staff that you exercise an option that was granted to you in state law to use electronic rather than print advertising for our statewide solicitations on large projects. There is a statute that gives municipalities the ability to do that if the council agrees to in a resolution, and so that's what we're asking you to do today. And this will make it cheaper and more efficient to us to meet our advertising requirements for large solicitations.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Okay. Open it for discussion, Mr. Morrow.
Just keep up with the tops. Make it easy.
Ms. Holder?
No questions, thank you.
Wise?
Yeah, I think this is good. No questions.
Mr. Baker?
My only question is, this doesn't preclude us from, do, from advertising in print if we decide that it's prudent to do.
Yes, sir, that's right.
And I, I guess I would just say that, you know, I would encourage us to continue to advertise in the local newspaper when we feel like it's possible that a local contractor would respond, because I know that times are different, but I think we're lucky to have a local paper and people still do. I still read it.
I don't, I don't have the statute in front of me, but I think it's a requirement that you advertise in the local newspaper. Local and then a paper with statewide circulation.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we have a, did I get everybody?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have nothing to say.
I'm sorry, I lost track there, Gary. Mr. Daniel.
Nothing to add.
Okay. All right, now did I get everybody? Okay, all right. We have motion and a second on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, that is the end of new business. We will move on to closing remarks, and I will start with Mr. Daniel since I overlooked him on the last round.
Well, I, I, this was an exciting meeting, I thought. We got to recognize Emery. He didn't sing Purple Rain, but I'm holding out for that, so.
Public comment, next time.
But, and also the, the presentation by Placerby, I, I, I think that's something, as I've said before, we've been working on for a long time. It's been in our conscious, maybe not actively working on it, but we've been thinking about it for a long time, and I'm glad to see us at this point and be here so well, so, thank you.
Mr. Baker?
Sure, I said earlier to people privately that I didn't have any comments the last couple times, so I've been building up some credit.
Oh, no.
So, I got quite a list tonight.
Got a bathroom break.
I'll try to go quickly.
Take you while you make your comments.
Well, first, I, I just wanted to thank the staff and the manager for the strategy session we recently had, and I was struck by the fact that this board and I think city leadership in general, city staff, has a very clear and consistent long-term vision for how we see Brevard in, in 10 years. And I, I also think it's hard to have those visions that, that coincide with one another. It's also hard to prioritize even having a vision to begin with. But I think it's important that we do that and it's important that we communicate it. And I wish that some other local boards would take a second to think about their own vision for, for our community, because I, I do think it clarifies how, the decisions that are made, you know, at meetings like this. One thing I wanted to call out, which was in the consent agenda, was an agreement we had created with Mountain True to upgrade the Wilson Road Bridge River Put-in, and I just wanted to call out that that was the culmination of probably eight years of work by the Tourism Development Authority focusing on the river, and it led to the production of a Blue Way Plan, probably four, three or four years ago, for the French Broad River. And that is all funded by occupancy tax dollars. So we hear a lot of chatter out there about tourism and what we could possibly using, be doing, advertising this place and why we're doing that. But that board, I'm really proud, I'm not on that, that board anymore. Lauren is, the, the snotty architect over there, and I know they're still doing good work, and they're putting occupancy tax dollars, which are paid by visitors, unless you're buying a hotel in, in your town, which maybe you are. But visitors are paying those dollars and we're, we're repurposing them back into the community with things like a river put-in, which is needed not only there but elsewhere, which locals are gonna use. I will also point out that currently our occupancy tax rate is set at 5%, and we have the ability to raise that to 6% if the county commissioners so choose. And they chose to put a sales tax on the ballot recently, which did not pass, but part of their reasoning for adding it to the ballot was that it would be paid partially by visitors. Well, the occupancy tax is paid 100% by visitors, or close to 100% by visitors. So in my mind, we should be collecting as much tax from those folks who are coming here and enjoying our city. I don't think they're gonna notice an extra 1% on their hotel bill, and we can put it to good use like this river put-in that we just did tonight. I also wanted to thank the Brevard Police Department, all the officers that worked throughout the storm, the fire department, public works. I was out of town, but was following all the, the reports and, you know, that one was a lot, a lot worse than I think we were originally anticipating. And particularly the, the police department, I know there's folks there, we're already working very long hours, and that added some stress to that, so just wanted to thank them in, in particular. It was mentioned by the Reverend earlier just about how awful of a weekend this community endured, and, you know, my son was actually in homeroom with one of the, the kids that was unfortunately killed in that accident. One of my very, very good friends was the father of, of the other family that was impacted. So it is very close to, to me, and I wanted to mention that TC Strong, which is an amazing organization here locally, has a, in the Trust Center Monday through Wednesday this week from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., and then again from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., a drop-in if you need to talk, if you just need to sit in the quiet. A lot of kids impacted by these events and, you know, youth mental health is obviously in a crisis state. So please, if you know people that would benefit from that, share that. And, you know, the city of Brevard, I think the mayor is fond of, of mentioning the partnerships that we have, and this is one of those things that is not solvable by the city of Brevard. Very obviously, we can't even really lead it, but we need to be involved, and I think it's important that we form those partnerships. Sorry, guys, it's a lot, I told you, I built up credit, so. Housing, I did wanna talk a little bit about housing tonight. I've mentioned it before, and I'm really glad we're making progress on Azalea and the Fairhaven Meadows, but I also feel like we have a lot more incremental development that could help. And I've talked to the city manager about what we can do with encouraging backyard cottages and ADUs. I want, I'm gonna keep mentioning it because I really wanna see us dig into that, not only on the, the ordinance side, but also on the financial side of, again, not, maybe not leading it, maybe not, it's our finances, but we can certainly make it easier for folks to find the financing possible to unlock the potential of their backyard and at the same time house people that need it so desperately. Just one stat I wanna throw out, the Bowen Research, Bowen National Research does housing studies, and it just came out, and for Transylvania County, I think it predicted about 1% or 2% growth over the next five years, but it also predicted that our share of the population under 35 years old was gonna go down by 2%. And that is not a good stat for us, because, you know, young people bring such a vibrancy to a city, obviously they're in working age, but we also have some really young, motivated entrepreneurs in our town, and we need to be encouraging those folks and not losing that important demographic. Let's see. I guess also on housing, on the Azalea Avenue project that was mentioned during public comment, it never ceases to amaze me how early the fear-mongering and hyperbole can start, and I just wanna say that I don't have to go to Asheville to see what kind of project that might turn into. I can literally throw a rock up the hill from there to Broad River Terrace, which I think is one of the, the shining beacons in our city for housing, and it was a Lytech, federally tax incentive-funded project, and I've asked the chief of police whether we have issues there, and he responded with a resounding, "Not really. It is a great, well-maintained housing development." I think, I've been in meetings with other people up here, it's exactly the type of housing we foresee on the Azalea Avenue site, and I'm gonna be proud of it once it's built. Just the last thing I'll say is, recently, the county commissioners were, some of the county commissioners were responding to our request for them to help with the Fairhaven Meadows project, and they, some of them seemed to suggest that we were not forthright, or we were somehow tricking them by requesting that money, or it was sort of a setup for them. And I just wanna say that that is completely false, not true. I think it's kind of embarrassing that they would suggest that, and it's just the type of mistrust that we need to get beyond. We've got to bury that stuff. We are in the same community, okay? We are elected officials reaching out for help on a project with authenticity, with dedication from the staff to try to get them all the information that they requested. And for after the fact, the suggestion that we were somehow being manipulated, manipulative is just sad, honestly. It's really sad for me to, to listen to that. And we have to figure out a way to get beyond that response and grow past it, because we're not gonna get anywhere if we keep mistrusting and thinking the worst of the other side. I'm making a commitment to not do that, and I know I've been plenty critical of the county. I try to toe a line with that and make sure that I'm rooted in the facts as I see them, but I know that sometimes I stray off of that, and I wanna make a commitment here to do better. I hope that we can partner on housing in the future. I know the city manager has already sent them some information about how they might help us very soon. I think that alone is proof that we were not pulling a bait and switch. We are serious about this, we're serious about asking for their help and needing their help, and we're gonna keep asking for it, and we're not going away. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Morrow?
I, I, with all the wind events, this, this unfortunate wind events this weekend, and even on my property, I lost some tops of trees and that sort of thing, I would like to ask staff to, and I've had people concerned about Franklin Park trees, as you know, we lost one last winter. So if we could initiate an inspection of city property where, where there are trees that potentially could be diseased, and you can typically tell that by just looking at the base, we're not talking about it needs a forester or anything like that. I think we've got people qualified to do that on our, 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 on our public works, and I would like to submit to you that we ought to do that wherever. I know we do that probably by contract or did on, on the Rockin Mountain Trail in the past, but that probably, that, that's good for a few years, but, but I, I, we, we saw the trees that went over in, in, in Hapsimpson Park. I don't know that you could, you could ever tell that's gonna happen, but, but I think when you look for, for trees that are diseased, or where the, the base of it has got rot in it, et cetera, you know that, they need to be identified. So, thank you.
Ms. Holder?
I will follow up with that as well. I hadn't thought about that, that's a good point. Is perhaps, if we don't have one, a way to, if someone saw a tree that is diseased or dangerous, to be able to report it to the city so that someone can come out and look at it? This month, we celebrate Women's Month, and there will be a celebration of, an event celebrating the memories of Moms Mabley on Saturday, Saturday at 2:00 at the Mary C. Jenkins Center. The event starts at 3:00, doors open at 10:00. The event starts at 3:00, and there's a suggested donation of $10,000. $10.
Right.
$10.
Damn it.
You're not gonna get one.
I don't need $10,000.
You're the first one there, right? I don't know what made me say $10,000. $10, $10, just 10. And if you wanna give $10,000, I'm sure that it will be received with much appreciation. I too am troubled by the loss of life due to the, the winds on Saturday and then today to find out a student died by suicide, and I hope we can begin to say as a community, died by suicide. People commit crimes, but people who die of suicide die of a disease of mental health. So if we can adopt that, died by suicide. I'm, I'm so shop-trained and certified, and so that's one of the very important reasons we say that, because they have not committed any crimes. They died by suicide.
Mr. Wise?
Thank you, Pamela. I think, I think that really is resounding. Yeah, we did suffer a tragic loss in our community this weekend, and... Yeah, we did suffer a tragic loss in our community this weekend, and try, I'm trying not to be hyperbolic or over-emotional about it, but this, this winter has felt to me like a little bit of a long season of loss. And I'll just say that I've been encouraged because spring is coming, and rebirth is coming, and I hope that both locally and regionally and nationally, we can start to kind of rethink some of what that loss has take, what the toll has been. And so I'm trying to embrace that idea of rebirth moving forward. I would also like to thank this, everyone at city staff and police and fire for all their work this weekend. I think this storm took us a little bit by surprise. Finally, Happy St. Patrick's Day. I would encourage anyone to look next to you, and if they're not wearing green, give them a pinch, that is the tradition, don't be shy.
Go ahead, Gary.
And that's, that's all I got.
Salt.
All right.
Okay.
I usually don't.
Moving on to our city attorney.
Yes, I'll just remind us that we do have two different closed sessions, and I would also respond to a citizen comment from this evening that the statement set out by the city on February the fourth never mentions the word sanctuary. We live in this weird time where words take on bizarre meanings. All of a sudden, the federal government's not funding anything with the word diversity in it, or inclusion, both of which are perfectly acceptable, normal, proper words that, that go, that are in the Constitution. And to demand that you, as council, make a statement, are you a sanctuary city or not, that word has never been defined, it doesn't mean anything, and it's, it's meaningless. And so I am pleased that you forewent the opportunity to do that tonight, so thank you very much. It is just a silly request to ask for you to call yourself something when it's an undefined word, and we live in a time when words have apparently lost their meaning. I occasionally feel more and more Orwellian every day as I open up the news. So thank you for not responding to that.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Madam Clerk?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, I'd also like to send my condolences to the family of, the families of the children we lost this weekend. And I'm sending hope and goodwill and thoughts their way. But I also want to lift up the first responders, some of which are affiliated with our organization that responded to those tragedies. And I'd like to request that everyone keep those folks in your thoughts as well. It's also traumatic for them. And reiterating what some others have said, I want to send my thanks to all my teammates from police, fire, Public Works, and a department that you all forgot, communications.
Massive department.
Yeah. Just in our storm response this weekend, folks came in on overnight Saturday and into Sunday, and all day Sunday, and made sure our response was swift, and our infrastructure stayed functional. And so I want to say to all those teammates, I appreciate you. Finally, for coun... Not finally, council, keep an eye on your inbox tomorrow or Wednesday for Lydia Ann Altman's report from our priority-setting retreat. So the document that memorializes the retreat and what we accomplished there. And now, finally, just a reminder, I will be out of the office again on Thursday and Friday observing my favorite holiday of the year, March Madness.
Why, there's nobody to watch, Thursday and Friday.
All right. You know, once again tonight, I think we have seen just the incredible amount of work that our staff does, and the wide variety of issues that our staff and our elected bodies really take on. And that is a tribute to both staff and council, because in order to keep our city functioning, it does require that diversity of effort. It requires that balance. So tonight, we heard about the architectural standards. We looked at why they're going to be folded into our ordinance. You know, we looked at the finance. Again, a wonderful job, thank you, Dean, the finance people. You know, tracking the money is absolutely important, and they did a wonderful job. We saw, as everyone has mentioned, that this weekend, our staff had to go out unexpectedly and do things, take down trees, deal with the, the fact the power was out. We had to deal with the, you know, bringing our water plant on, on generators, our wastewater plant. We continue services throughout the city, and that's, again, a tribute to the men and women that work for us. And I have to mention, I know I've already recognized him, but we have an individual who has done that for forty-five years. You know, Emery, one of the things I was thinking of, it would be interesting to try and calculate, is just how many hurricanes have you taken us through here and taken that wastewater treatment plant through? I know I've been an elected official through two of them with you, but in forty-five years, that has to be an incredible number. And, and you have done that, you know, just with the utmost professionalism. So just amazing job. I also want to emphasize, this is Women's History Month, and I'm going to use one of those forbidden words, you know, it, it shows the diversity. When we think about what women have given, women of all colors. And I think Moms Mabley's birthday is actually March nineteenth, I think it's two days from today. But I encourage people to go out, and, you know, the entire reason that we recognize a month for, for a group is because historically that group has been under-recognized, and that those accomplishments are not promoted. So take time to look, read some of the things that are out there about women in our history, and some of the incredible accomplishments that women, such as Loretta Aikens or Moms Mabley, have done. And finally, I do want to say that this was a heartbreaking weekend. I mean, anytime that we lose three young people in our community, it just is devastating. And we are all hurting. That hurt is not going to go away. The families, I can't imagine what they are going through, but I know our community will rally, that we will be there. We will surround them with love and caring and kindness, and whatever they need, we will try to provide. I've already been hearing and working with some of the nonprofits that are out there that are stepping up to try and ease the burden to some minor degree as much as they possibly can. But this is a time when we need to come together, when we need to realize that what really matters is we are all people, we are all here together, and what matters is how we treat one another with kindness and respect and empathy. Those are some of the most important values that exist in our community, and I am so proud of how our community is rallying around and providing that kind of support. So as we go forward after this meeting, just remember, there are people hurting, there is support. I think Aaron mentioned TC Strong has counseling set up in the Trust Center for people that really need some help in trying to really grasp what has happened and what we've lost. So take care of one another, care about one another, talk to your neighbors, and if you see someone that is struggling, if you see someone that you think is having a hard time, talk to them, help them get assistance so that we can prevent something like this ever happening again in our community. So reach out, be aware of one another, and be that good neighbor. So with that, I think we need to have a motion to go into closed session.
Closed session for pending litigation in the matter of HCA.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in closed session, please clear the room, and please stop our broadcast.